I'll call the council to order at seven o'clock having arrived. The, uh, the role of all council members are in attendance and a quorum has been established. Uh, before, uh, one of the first things we're gonna do this evening is we're gonna introduce some very special people who got some statewide recognition, uh, last weekend at the Hastings Sings competition. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Chuck Spavin to come up to the podium there and introduce our guests and give us a, uh, an update and, and news about, uh, our contestants from the great city of Hastings.
Yes, good, good evening, everyone. So this year was the ninth year of Hastings Sings and, uh, we have two representatives from Hastings that went on then to Minnesota Sings, which, uh, this year was held out in Woodbury. And so I'm introducing tonight, Sydney Kater and Maria Ramos. So they represented in very good fashion, they represented the city of Hastings at Minnesota Sings. Minnesota Sings this year featured about thirty-five cities, uh, over, uh, sixty contestants that sang, and Maria Ramos made it into the final round, which is quite an achievement. So, uh, we are really thrilled to be able to do this. We're looking forward to next year, another Hastings Sings, another Minnesota Sings. And we thank all of the people at the high school who we work with to, uh, to find singers. And we also wanna thank our sponsors of Hastings Sings, which is, uh, Christie Barst and the Chamber of Commerce and the Hastings Lions Club. Without them, uh, this event wouldn't happen, so thank you for that.
Well, that's great, can we have, uh, you know, the contestants Maria come up and...
(laughing).
Casey, was it Casey? I'm sorry. Sydney, Sydney. Well, please, tell us about your experience and tell us what you thought.
Oh, my. Um, I think it was, um, speaking for myself at least, it was a really wonderful weekend. Um, it actually started out as, you know, Hastings Sings, I believe, nine years ago. And, um, that's how I got to know Chuck and Kelly. I actually started Hastings Sings nine years ago, and so, like, I got to grow throughout all the years, and it was really fun and see how things develop and change. This year, I'm twenty-five, so it's my last year, so bittersweet, but, um, I just really wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity, 'cause as Chuck said, without sponsors and stuff, like, we wouldn't be able to do this. And, yeah, it was, it was, it was really awesome.
How about you, Sydney?
I completely agree, it was an amazing weekend. It was only my first year doing this, so I probably don't know as much about it, but I had a lot of fun, it was great, and I wanna keep trying to do it, like, next year and, like, the years after that. So, it is an awesome program, this for, to have in the state and the city.
I wanna congratulate you both for doing such a great job representing our city. I mean, there was thirty-five cities represented there at Hastings Sings, and you had the opportunity to represent our community, and we're very proud of your accomplishment, so thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations.[190.01][190.01](applause). Okay, uh, city, uh, council, we have before us the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on September seventeenth, and the workshop conducted on September tenth and September twelfth. Any additions to the minutes of that meeting, corrections or additions? Seeing none, they stand approved, calls are to be considered. I don't believe there are any this evening. Okay, and then we'll go consent agenda, what's your, council, what's your wish? Councilmember Brox makes a motion to approve, seconded by councilmember Leifeld. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails.[231.01][231.01](applause). Uh, council, if there's no objection, I would like to go to, uh, pub, reports from city staff first, before we go to awarding contracts of public hearing. We have, uh, some special guests here from the Department of Health, uh, we can get a early read on the water system update, and so Nick, I'll introduce you. Uh, welcome to the meeting and, uh, I come up, uh, with a, an update and presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Hicks. I just wanna recap what, uh, the city had to take action on about a week ago here to, to address a water system contamination issue that we had in town. Um, so I'll walk as briefly as I can through the action steps that we took from an operations standpoint, and then Lee's gonna talk a bit about the communication efforts and outcomes that were, uh, resulting from that. So, uh, going back to the week of September seventeenth, we had our routine sampling of our water, uh, throughout the city. We take samples at thirteen different locations, two times a month, and, uh, we have a third-party lab do analysis on those samples. And, uh, so the samples are delivered to the lab, and they have a limited amount of time to run the results on that, and by Thursday of that week, we had received a report that the indication from those, those initial samples were that we had an E. coli contamination at three different points, uh, all within just a portion of our water system, which is to say we have two different zones, and, uh, one of them's a lower pressure zone. We refer to it commonly as the old system. It's basically the older parts of town that is served by that section, uh, and that is where the contamination was found. Following up on that, it's required by the Department of Health that they then get involved and take their own samples from the areas in the same locations that, uh, turned up the positive results that we were seeing. And they came and did that on Friday. They have a limited amount of time also to react, uh, twenty-four hours to come down and grab their own samples, and then they kick into action their own analysis, which they ran Friday into Saturday. Reported back to the city on early afternoon of Saturday, September twenty-second, that they did have some confirming results that we still, that we did have contamination in that zone of our system, which immediately makes us, uh, have to spring into action to address that with disinfection and, uh, putting a boil order on for the affected area, which we got to doing, uh, in the afternoon hours of Saturday, the twenty-second. Uh, worked up a communications plan and deployed that, uh, throughout the evening and for the next several days, and we continue to do that to this day. Lee will cover that in a little bit. Uh, what we ended up doing then, throughout the evening and into the wee hours of the morning on, uh, September twenty-third, was to introduce chlorine into that part of the water system. We fed it from our well points and our, our treatment plant, uh, wells that feed into just this zone of the city, and we had to reach necessary concentrations at all the extremities to know that we were gonna adequately disinfect it. We were able to achieve that at about three AM on, uh, Saturday, or on Sunday, uh, September twenty-third, uh, let things sit for a little while, several hours, and then returned, our staff did, to start flushing that out, because what we needed to do next was to clear the system of that chlorine, so that we could pull additional samples for, uh, confirmation testing by the Department of Health, that we were then bacteria-free after, uh, doing the, the disinfection process. Uh, so we were able to achieve that, again, took most of the day on Sunday, the twenty-third, and, uh, at which point, early evening, we had the Department of Health arrive again to take samples and run their, their, uh, tests overnight into Monday, the twenty-fourth, uh, and that took until about five o'clock, six o'clock that afternoon, and we got good news from them that things were free of contamination, which meant, meant we could lift the boil order, uh, and go about operating the system as usual. Uh, just as an extra layer precaution, what we've been doing since that time is introducing, uh, again, a very low dose of chlorine into that part of our water system, preventative measure. It's something that we're gonna consider here going forward on a permanent basis, after working through analysis of what that would take to outfit the system. Uh, but we also did our own samples a couple of times last week, just to double-check and make sure that things were not returning to that, uh, that condition that we experienced the weekend prior, and, uh, on that front, we did get, uh, good test results in both occasions on Tuesday and Thursday of last week. So, we're in a good position, uh, as far as operating the system goes. Again, we need to do some analysis work to see what it would take, uh, implementing that on a permanent basis throughout the city, um, but those are things that we'll work on in the next several months here, and, uh, bring back a report on what we find as a result of that. Uh, for, uh, the benefit of the audience and, and yourselves, of course, tonight we do have Carla Peterson with the Department of Health here to answer questions and just explain how the Department of Health treats these situations and, uh, what they're looking for from us, uh, going forward. So, uh, we'll let Carla have a chance to speak here after Lee summarizes the communications end of things.
Thank you, Nick. And Lee?
Yes. Right. Right now. I can pull it up for you.
Okay. Good evening, Your Honor and council.
Thank you, Lee, for being here.
Um, so I'm just gonna do a really quick overview of the communication actions taken. That was another really important step in this particular crisis. Um, and, first I'm gonna go over the things that worked well, and then I'm gonna quickly touch on things that we learned from this and, and how we plan to move forward there. So, um, starting on the evening, or the, the morning that it happened, we, you know, pulled together a team to communicate, we met with the Department of Health, and Nick Egger, myself, Julie, and Melanie was online, um, helping us formulate a plan, how we were gonna try to reach as many of people as possible in the affected area as quickly as possible. And at that time, we just determined that we were gonna use Everbridge, which is part of our emergency operations plan. Everbridge is the DCC, Dakota County Communications, um, Emergency Notification System, and how that works is it is a, it's like a robo-call, or some people are familiar with hearing it as reverse nine-one-one, or we used to use a system called Code Red, all the similar type actions. But how that works is that DCC can draw a map in the affected area, and they can, and then they robo-call to everyone, all the numbers that they have in that affected area. Now, that, people can sign up for that in two ways. There's an, uh, there's an opt-out method, which is how DCC pulls in all numbers from the white pages, yellow pages, so that includes businesses, homes, and anything that they can get through that method is already input into the system. That person doesn't have to sign up online or anything, they're already in the system. So we knew that that would reach a lot of people that way. And then in addition to that, people who have cellphones, or people who wanna get additional notification via text, email, um, maybe their work number, or different things like that, they can actually sign up online, uh, on the DCC website, they can link to this Everbridge signup, and they can, uh, they can choose whatever they, they prefer, whether you prefer to get a text, or a phone call, or an email, um, or, like I said, at multiple numbers, you can choose all of those things. So that's how that works, and that's the method that we chose to use, to try and reach as many people as possible in a quick amount of time. So that first call, I have it up here on the, um, screen for everyone at home. The, the first call, the reason why Saturday says "Call One" and "Call Two" is because DCC had sent out the notification with, um, one of their callback numbers, and when they caught that, they realized that they forgot to put in our contact number, and then they stopped the process and, and did it again. So anyone who was contacted the first time wouldn't have gotten recalled, they wouldn't have gotten called again a second time, but they stopped it, started again, so that it had the correct callback number, which was the six-one-eight-five, which is one of our Public Works numbers. So that's the numbers for that, and then you can see the, um, data for Sunday and Monday. And we learned a lot when we got the, this chart back from DCC. I think, uh, a, a big takeaway here is that the system works well, it got to a lot of people, but it also missed a lot of people, and I think that a lot of that has to do with how people receive information now. Um, as you can see on the bottom in, in orange, there's quite a few people, thousands actually, who just didn't answer the phone. And I think we all know that a lot of people will not answer the phone anymore if they don't know who the call is from. So that's, that's a downfall of the system, and we're, what we're trying to do looking forward is think about how we can message this out to people, take this opportunity right now when it's definitely on people's radar, and, and get them to sign up in the method that they prefer. And I know that a lot of people that are, you know, that I know, would wanna text, and it, and even if we can communicate to that, to people who are maybe weary of callers that they don't know, and explain why, if they have a cellphone getting a text, we'll get that message across really instantaneously. So that's something that we're gonna work on in our, in our, um, action plan following this, is helping people to understand how that system really works. Um, alongside that, we did, we did have, um, a lot of notification that we did, we put all of the notices on, on our website, and then we worked with our local press and media, who were very responsible, very responsive and very helpful during this time. Um, we put a lot of information out on KDWA, because that was something that we found we could tell people. Keep looking for updates on KDWA, look on our website, but for the people who don't prefer to go online, that was something that they worked with. Um, we, we did live interviews with HCTV, and we met with Kelsey from the Star Gazette, so that was a really great partnership there in getting the information out to people. We also use social media, which is quite effective, that, that reached, our very first notification went out to, it had a reach of fifty thousand and, um, a very high engagement rate, so it was good to see that that audience is very engaged, we got information out very quickly there. Um, looking back on the process, I think that is definitely another area of opportunity to ask for help from the people who we know we can reach in a really quick manner. So that's, those are some of the things that we're looking at. I think I touched on mostly everything. Do you have any questions for me?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I have more of a comment, and I appreciate staff doing what you did, but what I, when I talk to residents, one of the takeaways I seen was, you see something, say something, and I was surprised how many reached their neighbors, if they got it or they called the other side of town. Uh, I give the residents credit for that, they, they really did see something, say something. I think that's a good, effective way. We can't measure it, but I think it was doing, I think we did the civic thing, the right thing to do, so congratulations to the residents.
Yeah, absolutely, we, I, I, I did hear that, and I did try and give feedback to residents that, you know, as we started hearing that some people weren't getting the Everbridge call, encouraging them, make sure you reach out to your neighbors, friends, um, grandparents that might live across town, please make a phone call, knock on a door. You know, regardless of what format we use, it was a beautiful Saturday afternoon, not everybody was available, not everyone was in town, and we need to, we definitely need to look out for our neighbors, so I definitely appreciated the people that thought that way, too.
Councilmember Balsanik?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, we're all very familiar with what DCC stands for. Uh, this is the Dakota Communications Center. They have a website, uh, it is, maybe it would help to, uh, give that out.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, you can register by going to www.mn-dcc.org. If you go onto their website and click Community Notification, there's a tab at the top, and then when you get, if you click on that, you'll get to the registration page, and then it's just simply inputting your information. You're gonna be asked to create an account, you have to input your, um, phone number, address, and then you can choose what is your preferred, uh, method of communication that you'd like to get in an emergency situation. And you can also input multiple numbers, so if you have children that you, that have a cellphone and you wanna input their numbers, or maybe you have a home, um, and you live down south over the winter, you can input that number. There's, there's many ways you can get notified.
Thank you, and I just wanna offer my very gracious, uh, thank you to, uh, the city staff. Uh, Lee and Nick, I know that you were kind of the tip of the spear regarding all of this, and, uh, it was very hectic. I know there were some very long hours that you put in, uh, a lot of quick thinking on your feet, uh, and, uh, it, it all worked out, I think, very well, uh, all things considered. I also wanna thank the Minnesota Department of Health, uh, for, uh, their quick response. Uh, this incident, uh, made me aware of how, uh, far-reaching the Minnesota Department of Health is, in terms of what they do for, uh, communities, uh, like Hastings, all around the state. It has to be a daunting, uh, a, a very daunting task, uh, but you certainly did very nicely for the city of Hastings. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, Councilmember Leifeld?
Lee, just to clarify, 'cause I think I saw someone reaching for a pen, that information for that website for Everbridge at DCC is on the Hastings page, is that correct? Is there a link?
Yeah, and also I wanted to mention that all the, all the reports and data that we came up with to present to council tonight is all gonna be put on our website tonight. So anyone that wants to see the report from the Department of Health, the numbers from our emergency calls, kinda, we have a, a communications timeline and operation, operational timeline, those are all gonna be available on our website by the end of tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Brox?
Thank you, and I certainly wanna add my gratitude to what Councilmember Balsanik said, and also mention that there were a number of Public Works staff that worked the whole weekend to work on the system with the disinfection and all the flushing of the pipes, so I just wanna add them to, I know Lee, um, and Nick and Julie worked very hard, as well as Melanie, and I just wanna give them a lot of credit and thanks, because you guys did a great job, and you worked under very difficult circumstances. And I think you've, um, already said, there's tons we can learn from this about how we communicate, and we can do it better next time. So thank you for all of the analysis and all the work that you put in.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Lee?
I don't, I'm not sure if I had to raise my hand. Um, if you don't mind, another thing I'd like to point out, I think that was maybe missed during the craziness of all this, is, um, our thanks to Councilmember Brox, who actually was one of the key players in organizing the free water at Cub Foods. So she was the person that made that happen, and I think that's important to, to, um, point out, and also all the volunteers that came to help assist with that. It was a really great, we, we just heard tons of people feeling thankful that that was offered during this time of uncertainty.
Definitely. Good kudos all the way around. Nick, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm not trying to have the last word here or anything, but I, I...
I know we wanna hear from Carla, too.
You get that. Um, one thing I skipped over there, as I, I ran through all of the steps that we've taken, was that the Department of Health did perform a, what they call is a Level Two assessment of our, uh, coming out of this event, they look at our way of operating and our systems, top to bottom, from well to tap, and, uh, they render a report, so that's what Lee was alluding to by the report that we'll share on the website. Uh, I don't know if, maybe we have Carla say a few words about that, uh, just from the Department of Health's point of view, if, if you'll indulge her.
That would be great, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Ms. Peterson, uh, welcome to the city council meeting, we're very glad to have you here, welcome.
Thank you very much. So I thought I'd just give a little bit of background when it comes to boil water advisories, just so, to help put this in context. So in Minnesota, we, we work with community water systems to issue between a half dozen to a dozen, uh, boil water advisories in a year. Um, and most often it's due to low-pressure incidents, and that was not at all what this was related to, this was actually E. coli detests, and we at the Health Department learned from each one of these, so there's things that we can do to actually improve for these other communities when we do a response. So first of all, our fact sheet, there's some improvements we can make there. Um, we wanna make it really clear that the E. coli that you would be exposed to from food products, like a hamburger that you hear in the news, it's a very different health effect than what E. coli is in drinking water. Um, it's much more, uh, significant, and it's a higher health risk if you, um, were exposed to E. coli in hamburger or other food products. What you find in drinking water has a much more minimal health effect. Um, at most, it's usually, it can be diarrhea or, um, nausea for a few days at most. And I also wanna reassure people that there's actually an illness surveillance network in Minnesota, so at MDH, we have staff on board twenty-four-seven that take calls both from individuals and also from healthcare providers, so if, if you experience, uh, symptoms that are similar to what we described in our fact sheet, um, you share that with the Health Department, either through your provider or through, there's a one-eight-hundred number. And what we found is that there was no trend in the city of Hastings, or, or the nearby communities, um, so that tells us that there were, were no reported illnesses that would have been related to this incident, and we need to do a better job at MDH to explain that to people throughout the incident, so they understand, you know, what is their health risk. Um, and, uh, secondly, the Level Two assessments. So, of the twelve, of six to twelve incidents every year, very rarely do we find sort of the one cause for the contamination. Um, there, in, there's usually more than one potential cause, and we'll never really truly know what had caused it, but I will tell you that the fall season is our most active season for positive Bacti detests in drinking water systems. And from years of experience, we've surmised that it could be due to a couple different things. So at this time of year, people are flushing out their irriga, or their lawn irrigation systems, and so you could have water that's been sitting in that irrigation system being siphoned back up into, uh, into your, our water mains. And so that's why it's important that people understand how to operate their systems correctly and to have backflow prevention, so that, that doesn't happen. Another potential cause is, uh, for communities, um, water travels typically in a certain direction in your water mains, so, so for example, all summer long, uh, the water may have been traveling in a certain direction, um, but school came into session, now the water is traveling in an opposite direction, and it's perfectly normal to have biofilm within your water mains, so now you've loosened that biofilm that was there already, which may or may not be, um, uh, related to the cause. And then lastly, water storage tanks, they can turn over, just like lakes turn over, they're stratified, so when you have colder weather, now you've kind of flipped the water inside the storage tank, so it's perfectly normal for there to be some sediment at a bottom of a storage tank, and when you flip that water, you potentially loosen sediment. So those are the three, uh, potential causes, and, uh, what you're doing as a city is, um, by looking at disinfection and managing those different potential sources, um, is a way to avoid this in the future, so...
Well, thank you for that report, we appreciate that. Council, is there any questions, or? Final question. I know we just got done with a workshop with a lot of this information, we appreciate you coming down and answering a lot of our questions earlier today, and being here.
And I did wanna point out one thing, too. I will say, your community is incredibly progressive and proactive in responding, so for some communities, this boil water advisory could've lasted for a week or more, um, but your community, where, let's say they had twenty-four hours to respond, they responded within three hours. Um, and, um, when it came to flushing, they were there at three AM in the morning flushing, and that's not typical. I will say, most communities can't respond quite that quickly, um, so I just wanted to make you aware where your community sort of fits in the larger scheme of things.
Thank you very much, we're, we're proud of our staff.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to also thank everyone for their tremendous effort that went into it, and the staff really did act very professional, and I am really impressed with their commitment and dedication to the people that they serve within our community, and also, you know, thank you to the Health Department. Um, we are really fortunate that, you know, no one was really significantly hurt within this. You know, I was telling the group earlier that I was one of the folks that had the nausea and, you know, loose tummy, and, and it wasn't comfortable, and I'm thankful that that was the extent of, you know, my symptoms that I personally had. And, um, and so, just moving forward, I think, um, I think everyone was a little frazzled by the situation if you were within, you know, those neighborhoods, and probably are still a little frazzled, because our water still tastes differently, there's a little chlorination in the water now, and, uh, and so we just think, you know, let's try to be positive, let's look for the silver linings here, that there's, uh, opportunities that we're gonna learn from. Um, Lee was telling us about all of her, the great lessons that she's learned, as she actually had to implement, you know, an emergency communications plan for our city, and she had said, for the first time within the five years that she's worked here, and so, I, I'm, I'm thankful, I'm thankful that, uh, we have had, although, like I said, it was a little inconvenient for a lot of folks, um, I'm just really thankful that no one was hurt, and that, um, in the future, when we do have a true crisis that, you know, emerges, that may be life-threatening, that we'll be in a better position to be able to respond at that time. So, thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you, everyone, appreciate, uh, all the reports, council comments. Uh, we'll move on to the awarding of contracts of public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight regarding ordinance amendment. This is gonna be a, uh, an issue for our times, Justin. Temporary keeping of goats for control of invasive species, I can't wait to hear about it. Justin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the city council has asked to hold a public hearing, uh, to consider adoption of an amendment to our city code, chapter nine, relating to regulation of animals. Um, with an administrative permit, this would allow for the temporary keeping of goats for control of invasive species and weeds in industrial and public institutional zoning districts. Um, currently, uh, goats and other farm animals are allowed in agricultural districts, uh, and this, um, map shows, um, those areas in green, the light green is agriculture. Um, the areas that are in gray, dark gray and light gray, and blue, which is public institutional, would be areas, um, where goats could be allowed by permit for, um, removing, removing, uh, weeds and invasive species. Goats are well-suited for weed control, because they're a low-impact and eat nearly any type of brush and weeds. They are generally concentrated in an area for a short period of time with temporary fencing. Property owners would generally hire a company specializing in this service, which would perform, uh, the necessary duties, including the temporary fencing, goat delivery, monitoring, goat removal, and ultimate, fence removal. The ordinance amendment was at the request of Ardent Mills to control brush invasive species on a portion of their property, um, as, um, instead of using a mechanical means or a chemical means to remove that, uh, speed, the species. Uh, the proposed area is about one-point-five acres in size, it's between the railroad tracks and a forested area on their property. The second photograph shows a little bit... The second photograph shows a little bit, uh, closer, the area that, um, they would be having these goats contained. Goat services have recently been implemented to control weeds in the following places on the screen, which includes the city of St. Paul, Hudson, Wisconsin, and Oak Park Heights, just in the last couple of years. Uh, John Hinsman, Community Development Director, has spoken with other cities that have allowed the proposed, uh, use in their cities, and has not made aware of any issues, um, with having those goats in those areas for the limited amount of time. The proposed ordinance amendment would allow, um, for the issuance of this permit administratively, um, for up to 30 days, at no more than twice a year. Um, the proposed, um, ordinance amendment would allow this use in the agricultural district, um, in addition to now the industrial and the public institutional districts. Um, it includes some requirements for confinement of the goats, along with nuisance controls, and, um, requires a minimum acreage of 1.5 acres, and requires fencing to be set back a minimum of 100 feet from residences, um, with some specific fencing requirements. Uh, there's also some requirements, um, requiring the site to be maintained and clear sanitary conditions, um, offensive in odors, flies, uh, dust, and other nuisances. Noisy goats would have to be removed, if there were any included in the group, and there's also some, um, violation, um, regulations that would also lead to revocation of the permit. Uh, staff is also proposing to modify the fee, uh, code, Chapter 34.04, for a permit fee of $50, and I can stand for any questions before and after the public hearing.
Hey, Justin, thank you for that presentation. Uh, I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to this ordinance change? Anyone here who'd like to speak to this particular ordinance? Okay? I'm going to close the public hearing, council, let's, uh, deal with this issue. This is before us, Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Justin, have we got, received any other requests for this, or is this, are we creating ordinance for a one-time, one-business request, or do we, do we see a need for this for anybody else?
Um, this is the first request we've had for this. Um, I have heard, um, of a lot of people, uh, throughout time that have been dealing with invasive species, um, especially buckthorn. Um, it may be something they'd like to, to explore in the future, I know they've, um, had, uh, service groups come out and try to get rid of it, uh, chemicals, um, and, and it's difficult to, to clear, and I've seen on the news that this has been tried in a lot of different areas around the country, and it's been pretty successful. Um, I'm not sure if it's, uh, more successful, but, um, it's, it's catching on.
That's just a follow-up, I'm not opposed to it, I just don't want to be creating ordinances for a one-time, I want to give this a try because it's a trendy thing. If it's proven it works, and it's opportunities for others, then I'm okay moving forward with it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's a great idea, because I think a lot of us are really concerned about pesticides, you know, being used, uh, to try to control invasive species, and so I think it's a wonderful option, and I know that in Red Wing, they're using goats to clear brush on, in some of the park areas, for instance, on Barn Bluff, where, you know, there's lots of steep hills and things of that nature. Um, I'm told that goats are really smart, though, and they figure out ways to get outside of their confines, and so I guess that's just the, the one tricky thing about the goats, but, um, otherwise, I think it, it's really, um, great, and if it works for them, I, I would urge our, our own staff to look at, you know, possible applications for it, if we have heavily wooded areas that have lots of, you know, buckthorn growing in it, that perhaps we could use it as well, so, thanks.
If we can amend the ordinance, say no smart go, goats can be allowed. Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, yeah, I, I see this ordinance as progressive, because it seems to be something that is catching on, uh, nationwide, I know St. Paul, uh, was employing it last year, even though a goat was stolen, uh, but it was recovered at, at some particular point. I should add that my son, who lives down in Rochester, uh, hired a goat herder with 20 goats to take care of the buckthorn, uh, at, at the lower end of his property, and that was three years ago, and no buckthorn has, uh, reappeared, so I see it as very successful. There, there are other types of natural ways, uh, I remember, uh, when I took a tour with the Minnesota Horticultural Society, when my wife and I were members, and one of the places we stopped at was the Mall of America, uh, the, the, uh, what is it now? It's, uh, the entertainment area in the center, not Camp, it was Camp Snoopy at the time. Yeah, Nickelodeon Universe, and they employ, uh, predatory insects to go after the insects that are causing harm, uh, uh, you know, in and amongst, uh, the plantings, and I was just amazed, you know, to see how many plants there were, usually when you go into Nickelodeon, you're looking at all of the rides, but there's a huge amount of vegetation that is there. So, uh, I, I, I think this is indeed very progressive, and if, as Councilmember Foltz said, if we can avoid, uh, the use of pesticides and, and things like that, uh, I think we're, uh, we're very environmentally progressive. Thank you.
Okay, uh, is that a motion, Councilmember?
Yes, shall move.
Councilmember Balsanik makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Foltz. We have the motion now before the body, is there further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye, those opposed nay, the motion prevails. Next, we have a public hearing, ordinance amendment for electronic graphic display signs. Justin?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. The City Council has asked to hold another public hearing to consider the adoption of amendment to City Code, Chapter 155.08, regulating signs. In 2006, staff proposed some regulation changes to our sign ordinance to, um, reflect, uh, a new movement in signs to, uh, graphic digital display, and when we were at a planning commission, um, the planning commission thought that, uh, we should maybe have a limit of 25% of the windows in the front of stores to make sure that they didn't fill up windows with graphic displaced signs, and when we, uh, brought forward the staff report and resolution to City Council, apparently we mixed that up, and we must have, uh, wrote that, uh, no more than 25% of the sign, um, can be a graphic display sign. We're getting that from the, the minutes of the planning commission meeting at the time. Um, so in the past 12 years, we haven't noticed that provision that says no more than 25% of a sign face can be digital, and so we've got, um, over the past 12 years, at least 15, 16 signs where more than 25% of the, the face is digital sign, as you can see. Dairy Queen and, and Goodyear, I think those ones were probably, um, permitted and installed in the year or two after, after that ordinance change, um, was done. And so, um, staff is proposing just to, uh, do an ordinance amendment to what was the intent at the time, which would be to go to, uh, have the restriction just on, on window area for graphic display signs, but in that, in that 12 years, we haven't seen, uh, any graphic display sign issues covering up a lot of windows. Um, there's some bars in town that have, uh, two or three neon signs, but that doesn't fit into the definition of an electronic graphic display sign, because it doesn't have a changing message. Probably the, the biggest, um, use of signage in the windows is, uh, the area liquor stores, but again, those are not electronic graphic display signs, um, and so if we want, if, tho, those wouldn't be impacted by, by changing this the way it was, um, intended in 2006.
Okay, thank you for that.
I can stand for any questions before or after.
Thank you, uh, Justin, I appreciate that, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to the, uh, ordinance amendment regarding electronic graphic design or display signs? Anyone here who wants to speak to that particular issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Um, one of the things I like about this, uh, particular ordinance is the, getting rid of the language, uh, with freestanding signs and the 25%, no more than that, be graphic. I think today's technology certainly is different, and, uh, we've seen a lot of these signs here along up and down Brimley Street are, uh, larger than that, and I think, uh, I think they're appropriate, and I think they're fine, and, uh, so I'm glad we're just getting rid of that language and not have businesses, um, have to deal with that kind of a restriction. So with that, council, is there any other questions, or I'll, I'll move to a motion. Councilmember Balsanik?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, I just, uh, signs, I, it just seemed to be have so many of them, but I think, you know, this is probably a move in the right direction. I remember, uh, a few years ago, when I was still, uh, active duty with the Air Force, and I was stationed in Aviano, Italy, at the Air Force Base there, and, uh, the leather strap on my camera had broken, so I had asked, uh, where I could find somebody that did leather repair, and they said, oh, the shoe, the shoemaker in town, they gave me directions, and I'm going down this little street, and I'm looking for a sign that says, you know, shoe repair, in Italian or English or otherwise, never saw a sign, but what I did pick up was the scent of, uh, shoe polish, and I followed that scent into this little enclave and into, uh, what was indeed the shoe repairman, and I asked him, I said, why don't you have a sign out there? And he said, well, everybody knows where I am, I, I really don't need to put a sign up there. You know, we all know where M&amp;H is, we all know where QuickTrip is, we all know where Spiral Pizza is, we know where, you know, every place is, and yet we just seem to want to increase the amounts of, uh, signage that we have, you know, monument signs and, uh, tower signs and signs, you know, on all four sides of the buildings and so forth. Uh, I look forward to the day that, uh, maybe, uh, everybody does know where every place is, and we don't need a sign. Thank you.
Okay.
I just had to say that.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Brooks?
Trying to make this brief, because this is a side note, um, I was just thinking while I was reading this ordinance, that there's nothing in the ordinance about a sign that is not working, so a malfunctioning sign, and this is just maybe something that I would like to refer in the future to the planning committee or the planning commission to look at, do we need to write an ordinance, in the ordinance, what is supposed to happen if there's a sign that's malfunctioning? Because I know there is one in town that's kind of blank, um, right now, and it's on anyway, and so we might want to consider if we write an ordinance saying, like, if your sign is malfunctioning, maybe you need to turn it off, just because that does get to the appearance of these signs, and, I don't know, it's something to consider for the future, it's not an emergency, it's not something we have to talk about right now, but maybe something we can refer to the planning committee of the council for future reference.
Thank you, and Justin, do you have that notes?
Uh, yeah, I have that, uh, note, and it's maybe something we could look at, at this point, from a property maintenance standpoint, and just talk to them about, uh, the maintenance of their sign, see if there's something we could do about it.
Thank you. And, uh, I'll seek a motion, council? Thank you. Councilmember Liefeld makes a motion to approve, is there a second to that motion? Second, by Councilmember Foltz, that motion is now before the body. Is there further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye, those opposed nay, the motion prevails. Uh, next, we have under administration, the Tourism Bureau Budget Presentation. I see our distinguished chamber president is here, Kristy Bars, Kristy, we'll ask you to come up, and we appreciate you being here tonight to give us, okay, to, uh, to, for this Bureau Budget Presentation, we're going to take the opportunity to set this up, I think?
I, I think we're set up, it's good to go.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, Your Honor and council, um, it seems like just yesterday I was here presenting on the 2018 budget, so a year goes fast, um, and a wide variety on tonight's agenda, so thanks for having me. Um, Your Honor, if you, if I can, I have the, um, official tourism guides that I just want to pass out to councilmembers.
That would be great, would love to have it. That would be terrific. Thank you, Kristy, maybe you can take a minute to explain those.
Sure, it's going to all be in the presentation.
Oh, well then, I'll wait.
Okay, so I'll give a quick review on, um, what the committee did this past year, and then we'll kind of jump into the marketing plan for 2018, 19. We do work off of a fiscal year of October 1st, um, just from a budgeting standpoint, that's why you're seeing the budget today. Um, but if you remember last year, we had just completed the Tourism Assessment Report with the U of M extension, um, and we had received it just a couple weeks before I came here to present, uh, on the budget, so there's a lot of information, and, um, our committee probably felt like you did, that, okay, this is really, really good information, but what do we, what do we do with it moving forward? Um, so that's what we worked on a lot this year from a committee level, and there were, um, three things that really stood out. Um, what stood out the most is that, um, the, uh, tourism experts and those that worked on, um, a tourism focus group that came from the U of M, said that, that, uh, there was a need for an organization to really lead Hastings tourism, and that should be us, so that came first and foremost, and we said, we want to make sure that we're recognized by our visitors and by the community members as the leader in Hastings tourism efforts. Um, the second thing was, we really wanted to evaluate our, our niche markets, so, um, you have a copy of our budget, we don't have a ton of money to do this tourism marketing, so we really try and focus in on just a couple markets to, to put those funds towards, and we wanted to make sure, based on the feedback that we got from this report, that those two niche markets are what we really should be focusing on. Um, and then finally, we wanted to create the best way possible to showcase our assets. So in, um, being the leader in Hastings tourism, we did a couple different things. Uh, first, we took the official tourism guide that really hadn't been updated outside of just numbers and some verbiage, uh, for a couple of years, and we were able to leverage a, uh, grant that we got through Explore Minnesota to redesign the official tourism guide as a whole, um, so that's what I had just passed out. Um, we decided that our tagline has historically been "A City for All Seasons," so we really wanted to take, um, Hastings tourism assets by season and make sure that our visitors were able to, uh, see what they can do if they're visiting in fall, winter, spring, or summer. Um, once those were printed, we strategically placed them in areas that are high, um, have high tourism traffic, so our lodging businesses, the downtown businesses, the library, or gas stations, so that people who are passing through can grab a visitor's guide, even if they're not planning on staying that weekend, but they can make the plans to come back. Um, we also took half of those visitor's guides that were printed, and we sent them to highway information centers and visitor centers outside of a 50-mile radius, really trying to get those weekend stays, those weekender stays. Um, the second thing we did is we really, uh, looked at our resources through Explore Minnesota and said, what are we not leveraging here? This is an amazing resource, what can we be doing better? Um, so we had an opportunity to rent the Explore Minnesota Monument sign for our Community Festival of Rivertown Days, um, and we had that there for three weeks straight, which is really good marketing exposure for us. Um, we also were able to take better advantage of our online listings, so Explore Minnesota has, uh, database that will populate their website, and as the official tourism bureau, we're able to add our full-service restaurants, we're able to add our tourist attractions, and we're able to add our tourism events. Um, so you may notice, and I know Councilmember Balsanik has noticed this, um, events brochure that comes out in the Star Tribune by Explore Minnesota by season, we want to make sure that Hastings is, is in there, and that was how we got Hastings as there is, by making sure that all of those events are populated on the Explore Minnesota website. Um, and then third, Explore Minnesota provides, well, they just started providing opportunities for local tourism bureaus to come present to their staff. Um, if you've noticed, Explore Minnesota is extremely active in social media and blogging, and so we want to make sure that we're on their forefront when they're, when they're doing blogs about history, when they're doing blogs about car shows, when they're doing blogs about wineries, so I had the opportunity to, um, do a presentation directly to their staff. Um, and then thirdly, we really wanted to focus on our online presence. If you remember last year, we had, um, it had only been a couple months that the Visit Hastings website had been up, so we wanted to make sure that we were continuing to populate that, so that our, our SEO was- So we wanted to make sure that we were continuing to populate that so that our SEO was rising. And then we wanted to be consistent in posting on our social media. In evaluating our niche markets, we focused a lot on biking and birding. We've heard from our lodging community that biking and birding are kind of the visitors that they see come often. And our community in Dakota County has spent a lot of money on improving our bike trails and we're in a really good position where a lot of those bike trails connect to other bike trails. So that seemed like a natural. Natural resources were, was also the number-one tourism asset based on the Tourism Assessment Report. So that was a good indication that we were in the right direction with that. So we work with some of our advertisers, the Minnesota Bike and Hike Guide, Minnesota Trails. We also did some online targeted ads around cycling. And then we worked with our City Parks Department to increase some signage on the 10-Mile Loop, which I think are being implemented here very soon. And then we also worked with our lodging community to kind of say, hey, what else can you do to accommodate these, the cyclists that come? So I know Hastings Country Inn has a dedicated room so that cyclists can lock their bikes at night. Just a couple of things to kind of increase that experience. The second niche market we had been focusing on was birding, which Hastings is the first Minnesota bird city, so it seemed like a natural. What we found is that it's a little hard to track the ROI on the birding because birders are, they are very protective of their intellectual property. I don't know if you've ever been out and tried to photograph a bird, but I've tried and it's extremely difficult. So we kind of said, we're not seeing as many birders come through our community and stay the night. It's still something that we want to stay on top of. It's still a huge tourism asset, but it may not be where we're going to be focusing our, the majority of our funds moving forward. This past year, because we had already committed, we did advertise with Big River Magazine and we continued our partnership with the St. Quirre Valley Partners. I know Thorwood had a lot of visitors, birders, that would come and stay there. So unfortunately, when Thorwood closed down, I think that there was a little bit of that, there was a gap for that market. They really wanted that bed and breakfast type of feel when they came to stay. And then I do want to point out, so moving forward as we focus more on our cultural and heritage tourism market, cultural heritage was the number-two tourism asset reported in the, in the TAP report. Okay, and then finally, we took this opportunity to make some changes to our community festival. Rivertown Days is known and loved by community members, but we wanted to provide other opportunities to bring more visitors to town for Rivertown Days. So as you know, we made a pretty drastic change in our layout so that we could really showcase our natural assets, being right there on the river with the Hastings River Walk and the new pavilion. And then we also wanted to drive traffic to our unique downtown as well. We don't often talk about Rivertown Days during tourism because it is a separate committee, but it's a huge part of our tourism. Our downtown businesses are telling us now that that's the best weekend that they have all year. So it's a really huge economic impact to our tourism-based businesses. Okay, so moving forward for 2018 and 19, we are going to continue our niche market focus on the active lifestyle tourism, which is a lot of biking. And then we're also going to make that shift to the cultural heritage tourism. And I'm going to skip to that third point because with cultural heritage tourism, we are, we've started a partnership with Dakota County Historical Society and the LaDuke. And we're taking a close look at the historic walking tour that we have right now and saying, okay, how can we make this more interactive? How can we cut it down into three or four different tours? How can we create haunted tours? And they are working with college interns right now to create the content for us. And we're going to be launching an app so that visitors can come. It's geo-tracking. They'll be able to take these historic walking tours, walk by the buildings and hear from, hopefully, I haven't asked her yet, but Cindy Thury-Smith in their, in their head, or someone local, you know, so they get that experience. This is what, this is what Hastings is about, this is Hastings history. So that's coming in 2018, 19. We're going to continue to strengthen our online presence with social media and continue to have a goal to increase our, or our website traffic. And then we're going to work with our tourism-based businesses and our lodging to create some off-season packaging, so some winter, winter packaging. I think that's it.
Great. Thank you, Kristi, for that presentation. Counsel, is there any questions or comments you'd like to make? Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. Very impressive. I'm so pleased to see this moving forward. The, so that we are getting beyond a sort of provincial view of who we are, but reaching out, you know, beyond, like you say, over 50 miles. I think that's absolutely great. And it's so pleasing to see when Minneapolis paper, St. Paul paper have their, you know, here's what's going on this summer, month of July, month of August, and so forth. And for years, Rivertown Days was never mentioned. We have, on Memorial Weekend, Memorial Day, the city, well, not the city, but the VFW and American Legion organized four, four separate Memorial Day events that happened throughout the town. And, you know, in years past, we, we see the list of who's doing what in different cities and Hastings has always been left off the directory. So I am very excited for what you're doing. And who, Trevor, Councilmember Lund, are you on the Tourism Committee? And, and who else is on it? Is it just, yeah, Councilmember Lund? I think, you know, perhaps you might want to say something too, but thank you very much for your efforts on that. Job well done. This, this is absolutely great.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Is there any more? Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I guess Joe told me I had to say something, so. No, I appreciate that, yeah. Kristi, you do a great job. I think this is, you know, handful, a couple of years of hard work coming to and starting to see some real changes and you can't, you can't turn something on a dime and you have to learn from, you know, what worked and what didn't and make those changes going forward. So I think, coming into a new role, I don't know how many years it is now, two or three?
Three, that's crazy.
And you didn't just start from scratch, you, you worked with what we had and integrated and made changes, asked questions, reached out. I think getting the extensions in and doing the TAP program and everything was good too. So I'll continue to, to remind counsel as we go forward that your budget that you have to work with is, is not one where you don't know what to do with the money. You're, you have to do, you have to be very, very smart and frugal with it, which is good, but at the same time, you know, with, with good intelligent tourism comes good revenue for the city, not just in spending, but also in, in investment, reinvestment into the city. So it's not just somebody coming and eating at a restaurant once and that's the money we get. It's, it's, it's more than that. People see this as a, as a place to invest their own capital and then it just feeds on itself. So I'm going to continue to, to bring this up. We have to find more creative ways to, excuse me, get the funds to, to the tourism effort, however that might be. And I don't have the solution, we've talked some ideas, but I think that's something that's important to consider going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else like this? Is there any, no actions required? Okay. Thank you, Kristi, and thank everyone at your, at the chamber and the bureau who works on this project that, we appreciate all their efforts. And we'll be continuing our dialogue as we have a strong relationship with the city and the chamber and that will continue.
Great, thank you very much. And just quickly to follow up on Councilmember Balsanik's comment, if we, if we know about an event, then we will promote it. We will promote it, promote it, promote it. And community members and tourism-based businesses can add their events without charge to, to our calendar. And that's how we kind of feed our social media stream, that's how we feed Explore Minnesota. So to really get those Memorial Day events in the paper and on Explore Minnesota, we, I would just encourage those community organizers to reach out to us.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, next we have a special event request, the Candy Crawl. I can't wait. Melanie?
Your Honor and counsel, thank you. We have before you tonight a special event request and it's coming before you because it does require closure, or it's requesting closure of Second Street. It's also the first year that this is being proposed, it looks like Nathan Kranz is coming up and I'll just cover the proposal real briefly if you don't mind, Mr. Kranz, and then we'll, we'll have you make some comments too. The event is proposed for Wednesday, October 31st, so Halloween. Second Street from Vermilion Street to Tyler Street. And the street is requested to be closed from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. The event itself is from 4:00 to 8:00. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Kranz and he can talk a little bit more about his event. As you see in our staff memo, with the conditions, staff is supportive of the request. Thank you.
Mr. Kranz, welcome to the meeting. We're very glad to have you here and we're excited about this. Please.
Sure, I appreciate it. I'm more nervous than I have been speaking at weddings before, you'll have to just bear with me.
We're an easy group.
I feel very ill-prepared after that presentation as well.
We're an easy group to get along with. You won't have any problems, feel right at home.
Well, what I'm proposing is something that we can hopefully build content within, within the city's tourism book there. Add an event to the Downtown Association area, the businesses down there. This one pertains to Halloween. Originally, in speaking with some of the, well, excuse me, all of those businesses that we spoke with, and there's a list included here, hopefully material for you, we're all in favor, all wanting to participate, all very interested, all spoke of trying this in the past and not pulling it together. We didn't really dive into what had happened to prevent that, but we just continued to march forward here and hope to put it together. It's a real cart before the horse kind of thing. We don't want to line things up without, of course, your blessing to shut down these streets, which we feel like we need in order to do the event the way we would like to. That said, I'm happy to field questions. I'm sure I could talk a lot more, but.
Why don't you give, you have the opportunity to be on television at the moment, why don't you tell us a little bit about what's going to happen that day?
Yeah, well.
What's happening to your event?
Sure, so we have.
Just to promote it a little bit.
Yes, okay, I apologize. We have, we have quite a few ideas and to each business will be their own, I guess, namely, what the, the thing to tie all of the businesses downtown together are storefront displays, okay? And the reason we're requesting the streets be blocked is, number one, we really want to promote a safe feeling for families to come down and take advantage of what we're setting up or blocking off. I know I would have very real reservations about dropping my six-year-old off, not that I would just drop her, but letting her freely walk around with a little group of kids as we all used to when we went door-to-door trick-or-treating, house-to-house, and we kind of feel like some of that's lost a little bit. Now, if we could provide an area that not only draws folks to it, recognizes the businesses, but also sets up a fun, safe environment, I guess that's our goal. We're also doing this as a fundraiser for Hastings Family Services, we have several different draws there. Dry food, storage drives. We also have things we would like to include, perhaps the city council in. We would love to see you guys participate in a costume contest in which the community votes. Now, I understand we're on Halloween evening, this is year one, we're trying to do this, but we did try for Saturday originally and it sounds like there was some mixed feelings on that despite the businesses down there being in favor. So we're moving to Wednesday, Halloween itself, and just going to try to get a big group together for that night and build on this annually. Again, the draw is tying the community down there to these historic buildings, which really aesthetically, I mean, Halloween, tough to beat, I think. Our little community of Hastings has some pretty neat architecture, which, you know, can be featured here. Drawing the, the public down to the businesses would be, you know, right there. And then Hastings Family Services, I guess, is the other drive here. As far as events through the night, we've reached out to local places, Black Dirt Theater, you know, we'd like to get them involved and put their name out there. We've talked about different performances there, whether they're going to do, you know, just costume appearances, if you will, or actually a skit or two that involve a stage. And I'm not sure if you've had opportunities to review the maps that we've, we've put together. They're crude, they are, I should not say crude. I was not able to do those myself, admittedly, I needed help. So I cannot call them crude by any means, but they hope to illustrate what we would like to do. And there's quite a few things there. You know, we would like to, I guess the other part of this that I may need permission for is for sound. You know, we'd like to employ someone with a sound system of some type, whether that be for use by Black Dirt Theater or, you know, just Halloween music, themes, noises, things like that to just play through the blocks there. Would not be as loud as your average concert by any means downtown, but, you know, it sounds like we need permission for that sort of thing in addition to closing the blocks down, maybe not. So we've had other ideas along the lines of a pumpkin carving contest, we've had reservations with that just due to liabilities. So we've, we've come up with two solutions. One, families bring their own pumpkins and set those up ahead of time and there's, there's a contest there. And again, with the contests, these would all be donation-based in an effort to provide for Hastings Family Services. We've asked them what they would prefer, you know, items, coats, bags, et cetera, for winter in preparation, or food storage, or even financial donations, whatever is best for them, we'd like to try to include somehow with whatever we decide between the businesses to go forth with for these contests. We just have lists of ideas. We are meeting with the Downtown Business Association tomorrow evening to kind of discuss, assuming, hopefully, we get some approval from you folks this evening. Other ideas that we've had with that pumpkin carving contest is kind of a reverse. Pumpkin carving contest, if you will, would be messy, I think it would be fun for the kids. We would lay down painter's plastic, if you will, on some tables and whoever can pull out the very last pumpkin seed wins. Whoever can do that first.
Sounds great.
Would eliminate the knives, you know, and that's something we think is big. So again, it's more of an attraction to, A, have the kids come down, have some fun, families feel safe about it, draw to the local businesses down there.
Well, that sounds like a great event, Mr. Kranz, and we're excited that we're considering it tonight. Counsel, I'll, issues before us, what's your wish? Councilmember Brock makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Lund. Is there additional comments? Councilmember Vaughn?
Just got a quick question here, Your Honor, this is more for staff. When we do special events, they seem to be down in the Second Street area. Do we notify, like we do with a development, 350 feet or whatever it is around? I just want to make sure that across the tracks is saying, because we're kind of cutting that off, they'd have to skirt around it. I just want to make sure that they, do they know about it?
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. We typically have the organizer coordinate or communicate with the surrounding area. We don't have a, a set footprint per se, because it kind of depends on the, the size of the event.
Sure.
But yeah, we would ask that the organizer reach out to those that would be impacted and share, share the plan.
I think that's good, but I think that's, I mean, it's broad. Impact mean, I see we got the business owners that are interested, we still got residents above, but I'm more worried about the traffic flow. As long as they know in advance that they're just going to have to go around. I think you picked the right night to do it versus a weekend evening, but that's my only concern. I think it's a great event, I'm glad you're doing it, but I also want to make sure we're taking care of the rest of the neighbors.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaughn. That's a very good point. We'll make sure, as, as we typically would, work with Public Works and Police to make sure traffic is managed well. Thank you, though.
And I see here by looking at the map that it closes before Tyler, just before Tyler. So we have that access to, east side can get around. But that's a very good point, Councilmember. Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I like that you bring up just having a, kind of a worry-free opportunity to let the kiddos kind of walk around and, and do what we used to do, you know, well, maybe not everything, but yeah, so. But is this, so I really think that's awesome. Is this going to be fenced off every, you know, is there like one entrance point? How does this work?
Well, so, so what we have, we have entrance points coming from what we thought and we're open to suggestions, of course. We also have Kevin and Lynn, who run the car shows, who have said that they would volunteer their equipment for us to use in blocking off like they do for the car shows as well. The backing that we have from the Downtown Business Association, Kevin and such, that's what's giving me my confidence to be able to do this the right way, if you will. I'm very green to planning anything like this. I'm more of a, this is a great idea, let's run with it, see where we can get. Having met with these folks several times now over, over the course of several days has just instilled confidence in me that this can be done. The way they do it, they're volunteering to help and set that up. And of course, we'd go to please the council and whatever requirements they might have to make this happen as well.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
We have a motion, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we do have a motion before us. Is there further discussion to the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the event.
Thank you.
Okay, next is comments from the audience. Is there any comments from the audience, Stephen? evening? Oh, please, Mr. Kranz.
If I may, my invitation for the costume contest stands to all of you, and I'll be reaching out just to see who would like to be involved.
I might have to change, I might not have to change my clothing at all. Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, counsel, we're, comments from the audience? Is there any comments this evening from the audience? Any comments? Okay, if not, counsel, announcements, announcements. Okay, seeing none? Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes, I believe we have a HEDRA meeting on the 11th of October.
At 6:30.
Well, what did we decide at the last meeting? Are we meeting at 6:00 or 6:30, Councilmember Vaughn?
Six, okay. It's been changed to 6:00, as of one minute ago. So 6:00 p.m.
Yes. And then we have, or perhaps you have that, we have an operations committee meeting.
Go ahead and announce that, Councilmember.
Okay, you go ahead. Great, thank you.
No, go ahead and announce the operations.
Oh, okay.
I don't have that one, so go ahead.
Oh, you don't? All right. We are meeting the operations committee, which includes myself and Councilmember Lyfield and Councilmember Brox. No, Lund, Lund, okay. We don't meet that often. But we're starting to take a look at the building projects and bonding for next year for street improvements, along with some other things, some potential parking restrictions in and around the football stadium for certain events and so forth. So 7:30 a.m. and that meeting will take place in the Public Works Building. Yes.
Okay, thank you for that announcement. Okay, if there's no further, I have a few announcements. On Monday, October 8th, a week from tonight, at 7:00 p.m., the Planning Commission will be meeting here at Hastings City Hall. On Tuesday, October 9th, at 7:00 p.m., the Parks and Recreation Commission will be having their workshop, and they're going to be meeting at the Joint Maintenance Facility at 920 West 10th Street, the Parks facility for some of you. So that's Tuesday, October 9th, 7:00 p.m. And again, on Thursday, October 11th, at 6:00 p.m., HEDRA will be meeting. And on Monday, October 15th, two weeks from tonight, at 7:00 p.m., is our next regularly scheduled city council meeting. Under community events, we, there was, this past weekend, I want to thank Councilmember Lyfield and those, Kristi was there, and Melanie, and several staff members, and Councilmember Foltz was there, where we had the think tank this past weekend with almost 50 community members involved, learning how to have a deeper discussions about diversity, equity, and inclusion in Hastings. And more events are planned to welcome all community members to this discussion. Upcoming on October 11th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at City Hall, a citizen group has formed to continue exploring these topics, and also interested in planning community events centered on these topics, and how to make Hastings a more welcoming place for all people. Citizens, businesses, and community groups' representatives are encouraged to attend. All people and points of view are welcome. Again, that's October 11th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at City Hall. We're also kicking off Equity Innovation Labs, a series of community engagement sessions with hands-on learning and reflecting exercises to develop a common understanding of identified challenges. There will be five sessions held at the Dakota Pines Banquet Facility, 2015 Westview Drive, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The first of these will be happening on Tuesday, October 23rd. There'll be one then in November, one in January, and two in February. So you don't have to be at all five. If you can, that would be great. But please come. Our first one is Tuesday, again, October 23rd, 6:00 to 9:00, at Dakota Pines Banquet Facility. And dinner will be there available for purchase, I believe, for $10 only. So, and thank you very much. There'll be free childcare available as well. So drop the kids off, and please be engaged in the Equity Innovation Labs. We'll have more information on this. People can get more information on our website under hastingsmen.gov, and you go there and you search under Equity. Counsel, we have no other business before us. A motion to adjourn is in order. Councilmember Lyfield makes that motion, seconded by Councilmember Brox. That is a non-debatable motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.